Director Delmar, are you still with us?
Yes ma'am, I'm here.
Okay, great. Director Delmar, why don't you go ahead and we're just gonna move straight to the reports. We don't need a report, I mean, we don't need a quorum right now to hear the report. Director Delmar, are you still with us? Because we don't have a quorum right now, we're waiting on one more delegate to join the line. So we do have a quorum, but I'm gonna go ahead, I know that you are busy. So I'm gonna go ahead and allow you to give your report at this time. So if you're, whatever you're ready, Mr. Delmar, I'll go ahead and, we'll go ahead and give you the fifteen minutes to do your presentation, and then we can go ahead and proceed and hopefully another delegate joins us on the line at that time. So Mr. Delmar, go ahead.
Uh, yes, thank you Madam Chair, and also Delegate Eugene So from Chinley, and also Delegate Stuart Estoff, um, that is here this morning, thank you very much. Uh, thank you for inviting us on your agenda this morning to talk about some jurisdiction issues we currently have with the Hopi tribe. And I believe the Chief of Police is on the line with us too as well, to talk about the matter. And the, um, I'm not really sure what the issues are currently right now, but the, uh, we've been working on this for quite some time, trying to get a, a, an agreement, a mutual aid agreement going with, with the Hopi tribe. And I, I, I know that they had took over the BIA contract, it's been like a couple of years so far. Even way back prior to the Hopi tribal police came into existence. We've been working with the BIA and trying to get in there a mutual agreement going with them because of some issues. There is one matter that I wanted to let you know about is the, the, um, the scope of work with our BIA contract really does not go into Hopi at all. But we've been working with the Hopi tribe as far as public safety is concerned for quite some time now. And there is a, yeah, we, we interact with them daily. Um, in the areas of Chitito, the northern, northern borders of the Hopi, which is pretty much Chinley District and Tubus City District is on the western side. And Delcon District is on the southern side too as well. So we surround the Hopi tribe and also the area of Monkopie too as well in Tubus City, which is a, an island to the east direction of the Tubus City Police District. I know there's a lot of interaction with them there, so, um. They, they gave us a proposal that, um, I understand that DOJ is reviewing right now, uh, which is pretty much a mutual aid agreement with them. So that is just briefly what I wanted to let you know. I think the Chief of Police is on the line too as well to talk about our relations with the Hopi tribe. Chief Francisco?
Uh, good morning, this is Chief Francisco. So thank you guys for hearing, you know, the issues and discussion about this kind of thing. Um, so I know that we have been working with the Hopi tribe for several years and there was some, um, debate even before I came on, um, on liability, on as far as responding, us responding onto the Hopi and then vice versa. Uh, there was some cases that went through court. And so to take care of that, I've been working with BIA and we actually added a mutual aid clause into the scope of work and the contract, which allows basically covers our liability when we go back up an officer on Hopi, uh, you know, in an emergency situation. Uh, it, it allows us to do that without taking on any misfortune or still covered and vice versa. So we have worked with BIA, uh, to get that added in there. Additionally, we do have a MOU that's been going back and forth between us and Hopi. Uh, that again, mutual aid, that outlines how we respond and help each other and our responsibilities to kind of add even more to, to that. And that's, you know, we have got to go back and forth now. Uh, it's being sent over one sixty-four, uh, to DOJ for final signature and review. So that's been longstanding work. Um, but as far as everything else, and Hopi does have their contract, they have the, the mandate to provide services on Hopi specific land, we have our own. Um, we help each other, but then again, when it comes down to filing things in court, it has to move through their court in their jurisdiction and vice versa, and we help each other with that. So, um, this has been a longstanding, uh, you know, kind of debate, but I think we have it sorted out now, especially with the new language in the, the scope of work and the MOU that's coming, coming for us. So, um, we really don't have a whole lot of issues. I know the officers, sometimes community members, you know, think certain, uh, police department has to respond, but we really, we really worked through this and we really filed the, the correct criminal reports and, uh, cases into the correct court. So that's just so we can make sure the, the courts can take care of the issue when it gets there. So we don't have issue at all. If there is complaint about any kind of response or anything, uh, we just need the ability and opportunity to take care of those things. Um, and, you know, those forwarded to my staff and myself, so then we can look and see what the situation is and explain those things. So I'm not sure what concerns specifically are out there in the community that are being brought up to leadership with a council or LOC. But if we can get specific dates and times and circumstances, we can look into it and see if we did something wrong or explain what the situation was and what route was taken in those situations. So I think there's just some misinformation and this, uh, direction out there as far as what can be done, what needs to be done. And, uh, we're, we take care of things on a case by case basis and we usually have air on the right side and make sure we take care of things. So, um, that's kind of where we're at on the, the response. I know there was another concern that came up, well, you don't have officers respond to allotment land. I don't, I don't know where that's coming from. I mean, if it's within the interior boundaries of the Navajo Nation, we take care of it. If it's in dispute, we take care of it. Uh, if it's allotment land or all those different statuses, we're, Navajo Police Department is mandated to take care of that on the criminal side. There may be some issues, uh, you know, which courts as far as, you know, land usage and different things are, are taxed of, but we take care of, you know, the criminal parts on all those checkerboard areas that are, um, you know, allotment land, homesite leases, all those things. Uh, those come up, sometimes it's difficult to navigate through those, but we respond, we take care of them. We don't just push it off. We, we, I'd be given my officer's direction that they will go out there, they'll take care of the issue, and if there's dispute on which court to go to later on, they can sort it out on a later date. But they're not just refusing to respond to certain areas. They're going out there when they're called to take care of those things. So that's, uh, my, my section of the report. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that is what we have currently, and also Delegate Eugene So, thank you very much.
Thank you for that report. Director Delmar, it's Chief Francisco. Um, Honorable Vince James, Honorable Otto So, have you joined the call?
I'm on the line, Delegate So is on the line.
Okay, uh, thank you Delegate. Um, so, so we have, um, Honorable Otto So and Honorable Eugene So, both who are currently on the line and myself, so we do have a quorum. So we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is now ten twenty-nine, um, when we're calling this meeting to order. Sherelle, can you assist us with the roll call vote, please?
Okay, roll call vote for the Law and Order Committee, um, Twenty-Fourth Navajo Nation Council Regular Meeting, December twenty-first, twenty twenty. Honorable Eugene Charles Newton.
Present, her location is Shiprock, New Mexico.
Okay, Honorable Eugene Charles Newton is present. Honorable Vince James. Honorable Eugene So.
Honorable, thank you.
Honorable Eugene So is present. Honorable Otto So.
I'm here.
Honorable Otto So is present. Honorable Edmund Yazi. Honorable Vince James. Honorable Edmund Yazi. So you have three in favor which constitutes a quorum.
Thank you for helping us with that, Sherelle. Uh, Delegate, I'm sure there will be no objection, but, um, Honorable Pernell Halona did provide an invocation at our leadership meeting this morning, which we'll go ahead and, um, we'll extend that invocation to our Law and Order Committee meeting here this morning. We're moving down to item number two, recognizing guests and visiting officials. We do have, um, on the line, uh, Honorable Delegate Wilson Stewart, who is currently on the line with us, Law and Order Committee members. Um, we also have Mr. Jesse Delmar, the Executive Director for the Navajo Nation Department of Public Safety, and Philip B. Francisco, the Chief of Police for the Navajo Nation Police Department, who just provided their reports. We also have my LDA, Shirley Jumbo-Rintella, or Rintella Jumbo on the line. Uh, we have Hope McDonald-Lontry, who's also on the line. Uh, Lorraine is not on the line with us this morning. Uh, we have instead Angelita Benali, who is assisting Lorraine this morning, and we have Sherelle, who's also on the line. Do we have anybody else on the line with us?
Uh, yes. Good morning, this is Susan Eastman from Navajo Hopi Legal Services, uh, calling in for DOJ.
Good morning, Ms. Eastman, is there anybody else on the line? Okay, uh, so with that, we'll go ahead and proceed forward down to item number three, review and adopt the agenda. Uh, Lo, um, I'm sorry, Angelita, can you go ahead and read the agenda into the record, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, and members of the Law and Order Committee. We have your agenda of the Law and Order Committee, Twenty-Fourth Navajo Nation Council Regular Meeting Teleconference, December twenty-first, twenty twenty. Uh, Presiding Honorable Eugene Charles Newton, Chairwoman, Honorable Otto So Vice Chairperson. Location is via teleconference. One, call meeting to order, roll call invocation. Two, recognize guests and visiting officials. Three, review and adopt the agenda. Four, review and adopt journals, none. Five, receive reports. A is a report from Jesse Delmar, Executive Director for NNDPS, and Philip B. Francisco, Chief of Police and then PD. And it is, uh, the report is regarding the Hopi partitioned land on coverage issues and other matters related to the area. Six, old business, none. Seven, new business. A is legislation zero-three-zero-eight dash twenty. And, um, B is legislation number zero-two-nine-two dash twenty. And eight is. Your manager.
Thank you, Ms. Benali, for assisting us. Hello, were you done?
Yes, I am, yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. So with that, committee members, the agenda has been read into record. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
I motion, uh, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Honorable So, um, can I get a second?
Honorable So, Eugene, second.
Okay, Honorable Eugene So. So with that. To the agenda, if so, now is the time to speak up. Okay, so there's, uh, nothing there. Um, Sherelle, we're gonna go ahead and proceed forward to the vote. Can you assist us with the roll call vote, please?
Okay, roll call vote. Honorable Vince James, how do you vote? Honorable Eugene So.
Green, oh, yeah.
Honorable Eugene So votes green. Honorable Otto So.
I vote green.
Honorable Otto So votes green. Honorable Edmund Yazi. Honorable Vince James.
Thank you for that, Sherelle. So with that, the agenda does, um, move, or the agenda is hereby accepted with a vote of two in favor, zero opposed, three not voting. When we down to item number four, review and adopt the journals, there was none. Item number five, we just received a report from Jesse Delmar, the Executive Director for the Navajo Nation Department of Public Safety and Philip B. Francisco, Chief of Police, Navajo Nation Police Department, regarding Hopi partitioned land, um, on coverage issues and other matters relating to the area. Uh, so with that, can we go ahead and get a motion to accept the report at this time?
I motion, Vice Chair.
Motion made by Honorable Otto So, can I get a second?
I reckon I'm behind.
Second by Honorable Eugene So. Before we proceed forward to the vote, are there any questions at this time for the report that has been provided to us?
Um, Madam Chair, I have a question, uh, in a comment, uh, I may please?
Yes, um, before I recognize you, Honorable Otto So, I just wanna say, I can't say for assisting, um, Law and Order Committee last week, uh, while I was, um, recovering from, from COVID. I really appreciate your, um, your stepping up to the plate and helping me during that time and also assisting the committee during that time as well, so I can't, uh, for that. So I'm gonna go ahead and recognize you at this time, Honorable Otto So.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and, uh, and, uh, you're welcome, you're welcome. And, uh, you know, that's just the role of the Vice Chair to step in when he, the Vice Chair needs to. So that's all it is. And then we're glad that you recovered and, uh, uh. My head needs to. What was that? Oh, they're not in the Gulf of the, uh, 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 no, um, uh, 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 uh. I shouldn't need to know. Oh, I didn't know. And then, and then I bet I should know. Oh, I should know. I didn't know. I could, I shouldn't know.
Yes, yeah, that, yeah, that's true. So, you know, um, that's how a lot of our elders.
State land, back into tribal trust land, and then down into Indian allotment land area. So there's three jurisdictions. And, uh, there's issues there. And, um, the gentleman walking down the road. I was curious enough, I walked by, I picked, I, I picked him up in my truck. They can get in the back, I'll give you a ride wherever you're going. He was mad. Come to find out, the gentleman was a Hopi man. And, so I said, "What happened?" He goes, "Oh, we're going through a drive-through and, uh, the Navajo police pulled us over and, um, decided to, um, to, um, apprehend my vehicle." I told them that this is state land. You don't have jurisdiction. But they still took my vehicle. And if this person really, really thought of, um, of, um, taking the Navajo Nation to the courts, I think he has a vile, a, a, a valid case where he could, you know, ask for damages. Because we had a Navajo police officer, officers, I thought, order these people out of their vehicle, and told us, "Non-Navajo to leave." Yeah, in a way, they have jurisdiction on the Native American. But, the vehicle that was apprehended was off tribal jurisdiction. Therefore, you know, what governs a police officer to apprehend a vehicle in County Island? So it's just saying like, sending a Navajo police officer, pulling them over in downtown Gallup, and out, and collaring tow, a tow truck, telling them to leave, and the Navajo Nation ordering that. What is the difference, or doing the same thing here, here, or there in Flagstaff, or Hobart, or Winslow? I guarantee you, if it wasn't a Belacana, a Belacana would take us to court, tell us, "You don't have jurisdiction." So a lot of these things is on my mind and, um, I just, I, you know, I was just curious, you know, asking that, that individual. But in my mind, if non-Navajo decides to, this Indian, Navahopi Indian decides to take this to court, to the court, to the, to the county level, what type of, how much water does he have? I mean, uh, you know, how much weight does he have to again, on, against the Navajo Nation? Whether, you know, he was entomphicated or not? The issue is that, that officer probably does not even have a, uh, state, um, probably not, doesn't have his, um, uh, commission from the state approved. So if he doesn't have the state commission approved, he or she, what is he utilizing? How much does the, uh, does the federal, um, uh, commission card hold on, 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 and, and treating people, I mean, not treating people, um, at, telling people to leave on jurisdiction that's really not in their area? Those are just a lot of things, and those are the things that I see with this issue with HPL. The, um, yeah, we can say, "Oh, it's an, um, Indian country." It borders Navajo and borders Hopi. And I guarantee you, Hopi tribes are gonna tell us, "Navajo, this is my jurisdiction, leave us alone. Let us take care of our own business." So those are just some of the things that I, I, I look at. And, uh, I know we had a jur- jurisdiction meeting that we were gonna have, and then Tubus City would have another jurisdiction issue. And, uh, that's where the Tubus City Boarding School and Tubus City Hospital and the public school sit. I understand that is on federal land. And what I am, information that I'm getting, um, um, uh, pre, pre-information I'm receiving is that that federal land tract is not an administrable area, is not an administrative order. Solely government land. U.S. federal government property, because the federal government bought that property from the Mormons in nineteen oh two. And it was excluded, and it sounds like, the way things are going, it was excluded from the nineteen thirty-four reservation expansion that, uh, happened. So it may not be tribal trust. And it goes back to the authority again, jurisdiction of Navajo. But do, what do we have? How much jurisdiction control do we have in that, um, uh, secretarial order there in Tubus City? So these tie to these jurisdictional issues that, that, that are being discussed here. And, uh, I really hope that, um, um, Navajo Public Safety Legal can shed some light to this and work with the Department of Justice to try to, uh, get this, um, out of the way, because, uh, we need to find clarity. One time, I came back from Wonder Rock about two o'clock in the morning, and it was from a meeting. And, Sunday morning, I saw a police officer, which is light fashion, right by Tubus City Trading Post. And I saw a car, it was, it was covered with a white sheet, or a, a, a sheet. My chapter meeting was Sunday at, uh, ten o'clock. So I drove down, um, I drove down, and, uh, continued to saw, I, I continued, I, I saw that Navajo pol- another Navajo police officer continues to park there. And come to find out, they were waiting for county so that they could get that, um, I guess, transport the body to the hospital. And the body was a non-Navajo, to what I under, what I later gathered, was a Belacana. And, um, if Navajo does not have that jurisdiction to make that call and had to wait for county, what is the difference when they, Navajo police tells someone to get out of their vehicle at McDonald's and go walk and call the tow truck and get their vehicle towed? So a lot of those issues that I have, and, uh, I believe county, it took Coquigny County about twelve hours to get there. And that's the reason why I always tell Coquigny County, "How are you assessing and trying to help with the public safety issue on, in Tubus City? Because we have County Island, just like the Hopi tribe. That Mon Copi Reservation is just right there." And, uh, so those are some of my, my issues, and I, I, I really would like for, um, Public Safety to really start talking to Department of Justice related to the jurisdictional issue in the community of Tubus City. My community is very unique. We have tribal trust land. We have secretarial ordered land that is one hundred percent federal land. It's not part, uh, uh, the investigation that BIA is doing is saying that we have jurisdiction. Navajo don't have jurisdiction. Now we have the county land plot there again. So those are some of the issues that I have with, with these, um, issues related to the Hopi tribe and, uh, um, um, into HPL. So, uh, these are, um, areas that I think we need to really get our attorneys to, to start, uh, vetting through, reaching out to the county, reaching out to the federal, um, uh, BIA, reaching out to, um, Hopi, to iron this thing out, because if we don't iron it out, the same thing is gonna be going on, and I guarantee you, it's been going on way before me. And, uh, I just don't want the Navajo Nation to be liable for some, some, uh, um, if they do an action, then the nation is taken to the courts. Because Coquigny County, I'm glad Coquigny County flipped this, this election. It flipped blue. Or it, it flipped to the, um, to the Democratic Party. But realistically, Coquigny County, when you look at the populated area, and that's how their vote is, and they always voted Republican. And, um, I'm very glad that it flipped. But if we have our judges at the county level asserting that Navajo don't have jurisdiction, that play, that, that, that will always be the goal there. No matter who you have in the pres- as the President of the United States, you will always have the federal government undermining Indian jurisdiction and Indian sovereignty. We had eight years of President Bill Clinton. We had eight years of, uh, President George Bush, Bush Two. We had eight years of, um, President Obama. We had one year, one term, forty years of Donald Trump. Now we have Joe Biden. No matter who we have in the White House, Indian jurisdiction and sovereignty will always be contested by the federal government, trying to wiggle their way out of the trust responsibility. Congress is the party, is the body that actually makes and can change these rules. And when you look at Congress, the history of Congress always been a strong Republican force. And even though we have Democratic Party members, you know, some aligning with Indians, but some of them does not align with Indian tribes, because they continue to undermine tribal sovereignty. Through history, Indian termination policy has been introduced by the Democratic Party. To this day, you know, you look at who Indian tribes fought, you look at the history, when those histories happened, Democratic Party always did that to Indian tribes. And it always makes me think, are, that, that they really changed their way of, 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 of their policy? I don't know. But again, we had clearly twenty-four years of Democratic Party that where we could change Indian policy, and the federal government always fought against us. Under Obama administration, Navajo head start was attacked. Federal funding, about eight million dollars was how much they were gonna, they were gonna, um, shortchange us. And our Department of Justice attorney took this, took, took this to court.
This call has been recorded and transcribed.
A bash that these jurisdictional issues are issues that are, that, that, that we have to continue to fight and educate Congress on to change these laws and that. This is Salt River Peblo. You know, uh, when, when, when the Soha Shee cut that, you know, people are probably saying, "Oh, Otto So's wrong. He doesn't know what he's talking about." But that's just what I think that there's issues related to these, to these issues and, and. I advise you to really go start researching this, these areas out so that we have a clear answer and clear authority where Navajo has jurisdiction. Because I don't want Navajo to be sued at one point. Indians are getting smarter. You know? They, they used to just push us around and say, "Oh, they're not gonna do anything, they're not gonna take us to court." But they are showing, we have individuals that know right from wrong and how on, on the right. And if their rights are infringed on, they may take us to court. Oh, uh, and again, uh, sorry for, um, doing some sort of a history course here, history lesson, but, oh, what's up on such case? This is just what I picked up when I was in high school, how three branch government should work. Wish the education system would have given us, shed more light on how Indian policy works. Indian. At that level. They have no clue how sovereignty is always is an issue that the federal government is always willing to challenge us on. But again, thank you very much for this time, Madam Chair. And I appreciate this and, um, um.
Thank you, Honorable Otto So for that. I'm gonna go ahead and turn the floor back over to Mr. Delmar and to respond to the comments and to the questions that were provided by Honorable Otto So. We also have Honorable Vince James, who is on the line, Honorable Vince James.
Yeah, there's Navajo.
Okay, just, uh, wanna get it on the record that you joined the call, um, when Honorable Otto So started talking, so, and you didn't wanna interrupt him. But, Terrell, please mark, um, that, uh, Honorable Vince James is present for the record. So with that, um, Mr. Delmar, the floor is yours.
Okay, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. And also, good morning, uh, to all. Delegate James, good morning, and also Delegate, uh, Vice Chair So. Ako Vice Chair So, the. Some of the information that you're, uh, you're aware of regarding jurisdiction between us and the Hopi tribe. And I guess you could relate that with the San Juan Pai tribe there too as well. But, um, the first item you talked about were, um, some of the really potential relocaties had signed agreements to sustain their areas of where they resided for a long time, that they signed agreements with the Hopi tribe on certain things, and, uh, and particularly as we speak, we're talking about public safety services and also law enforcement services. I, I'm not really sure, and perhaps our legal, legal, um, council people from the Department of Justice, Navajo Nation Department of Justice could, uh, allude to better than me, but obviously, we really don't have jurisdiction, um, in, on the Hopi side as well, so. And, and that is pretty much clear. I don't, uh, the item you talked about concerning other areas like the, um, the area in Tubus City, and perhaps, um, the Cameron area, and other areas of concern too as well, near, near Page. Page, particularly Page. Um, as you may be aware, it really depends on the level of where the water is, is at. Um, that's where our jurisdiction is done. So some, a lot of questions. Like you said, um, either the state or the federal government, very large state of Tubus City. I think you said, the early eighteen hundreds. Um, what I've come to learn is a lot of these areas really depends on, uh, whether there was an agreement that was made way back then as to how the status of these lands were, were born, and then how they exist today. Uh, for one example is the federal enclave in, right in the middle of Winslow. And they had been calling us to respond to the, um, Winslow IHS area, and also to the, kind of the, uh, dorm, dorm area there in Tubus City. That the city of Winslow thought we had jurisdiction at the time, so what we did was we reached out to the U.S. Attorney's Office, and it took them a while to research it. And it came down to that the land status of the Winslow Dorm, including the Indian Health Services there in, which are located right in the city limits, within the city limits of Winslow. Um, way back in the, uh, nineteen fifties, U.S. Attorney's Office. Um, which pretty much stated, uh, who had jurisdiction there. Long story short, it turned out that the city of Winslow had jurisdiction to respond to the Winslow Dorm area, and also to IHS. And each of these areas, same thing in, in Hobart too as well. In Flagstaff, the city of Winslow has been responding to, uh, the Flagstaff Dorm without any problems at all, and perhaps they know the land status of that area, so. It really depends, uh, it's from uh, we're willing to do that. I don't, uh, certain areas like, uh, you talked about. But the one thing I wanted to make clear with you is that we don't have jurisdiction, criminal jurisdiction on the Hopi side. Therefore, they're reaching out to us and, and trying to do, um, what's regarded as a mutual aid agreement. From the U.S., or not U.S., but the Navajo Nation Department of Justice. So perhaps, Ma- Madam Chair, I believe we have a, um, legal person that is on the air, um, from the DOJ side too, and, uh, perhaps should may have some input on a lot of the areas and a lot of points that the Vice Chair had talked about. Madam Chair?
Thank you for that, Mr. Delmar. I believe it's Susan Eastman from DOJ. Are you still on the line with us?
Uh, yes, I am, thank you.
Would you like to, uh, provide, um, more comments, or, um, if you can answer some of the questions that were posed by Delegate Otto So? Thank you.
Uh, yes.
Madam Chair, question up here.
Ms. Uh, Yudin So, go ahead.
I was just thinking, while, um, Otto went on, and I don't know, we seconded its agenda or something. That's all my question, thank you.
I'm sorry, you cut out there, Honorable Yudin So, can you repeat your question?
Um, did we second the agenda?
Yes, uh, the motion was made by Honorable Otto So and, uh, seconded by Honorable Yudin So for the report.
Okay, thank you, I was trying to.
Ms. Eastman, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I left out the accommodation agreement, um, which was drafted by Lee Phillips, who remains our outside counsel, and Lee Phillips and Bob Malone, they represent the, uh, the HPL Navajos who signed the combination agreement leases with the Hopi tribe. But I'm looking at that combination agreement, and, uh, there's a section on jurisdiction. And I'll just read to you what it says on jurisdiction. It says here that the HPL Navajo signing this agreement, meaning the accommodation agreement, and all other persons, minors and guests, occupying his or her home site are subject to the jurisdiction of the nation and its courts with regard to issues which are, which are entirely Navajo related, which would include probate, dom- domestic relations, child custody and adoption, tribal benefits and services. Otherwise, they are subject to the civil and criminal jurisdiction of the Hopi tribe and Hopi tribal court while, while they reside on the HPL. So, uh, I think that, uh, paragraph that I just read to you, that Navajos, uh, living on the HPL are subject to accommodation agreement leases, are subject to the crim- criminal jurisdiction of the Hopi tribe and civil jurisdiction outside of the areas of basically family law and tribal benefits and services. Although, uh, I don't know, it's not clear what tribal benefits and services are, they mean, as that's rather big. So I don't know, um, that, um, I don't know that, that HPL Navajos living on, that, uh, uh, living under Hopi jurisdiction, if they would, if they did get any CARES funding, but that, that, that area is rather ambiguous, but clearly they are subject to Hopi criminal jurisdiction uh, and, uh, civil jurisdiction, uh, uh, which I think probably relates to grazing and, and, uh, the terms under which they, uh, live on their a, their accommodation agreement leases with their homesites, farming, grazing. Um, those would be under Hopi jurisdiction as well, uh, uh, for the civil area. Uh, we could, uh, you know, I could, after this call, you know, I'm gonna contact the AG, Doreen and Cameron and, uh, uh, relate to them, the, uh, expe- uh, their concerns by Delegate Otto So. So we can have a conversation and work on any gaps uh, that are, uh, in terms of getting services to, uh, HPL Navajos. If they, you know, are, they seem to be in a, uh, a Lindo area where, you know, they are clearly subject to criminal jurisdiction, but civil, uh, there's a great area of, you know, whether, under which tribe do, do, do the HPL Navajos get services? Do they get services from the Hopi tribe or from the Nav- Navajo, Navajo Nation? And that's, and that may include CARES funding and, uh, for infrastructure. So that's a great area that probably, we need to spend more time with DOJ and perhaps at some point, ha- you know, have a, we, uh, try to reach an agreement with the Hopi tribe, uh, as to making sure that, uh, those HPL Navajos living under Hopi jurisdiction are getting access to CARES funding, because, uh, the accommodation agreement obviously clearly, uh, provides that HPL Navajos are entitled to, uh, infrastructure, uh, and can make agree, they can make their own arrangements for connection of utilities. I don't know how that works, um, how, if that, if that's working. Um, that's something I think that Lee and Bob have been working on. I know that, um, I think Lee and Bob did try to secure CARES funding for HPL Navajos. I don't know that, I don't know if they got any, but I know that's something that Lee and Bob were working on, um, within the last couple of months. So they would have more information about that than I, than I do. Um, so, uh, so to try to conclude, you know, uh, th- those Navajos living on HPL pursuant to the accommodation, accommodation agreement leases are clearly subject to that Hopi criminal jurisdiction and some civil jurisdiction that's not related to Navajo family law or probate, um, uh, uh, in those areas. I, I, I hope that answers some of your questions, Delegate So.
Does that conclude your, uh, your information, Ms. Eastman?
Uh, yes, thank you.
Honorable Otto So, does that, um, answer your questions? Honorable Otto So, does that, um, answer your questions and your concerns?
Yes, um, that, that one paragraph sums it up that those families on there are subjected to Hopi jurisdiction under the criminal and, um, uh, civil. So, um, that clearly indicates that Navajo PD does not have jurisdiction. That's all. Thank you. I'm ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other delegates who have any questions at this time for the presentation provided to us?
This is Delegate James.
Honorable Vince James, you have the floor.
Uh, yeah, although I will say. Good morning to everyone. Um, in regards to HPL, um, this was one of my, my, my areas of concern in regards to how, um, Navajo Nation Public Safety can assist with constituents in Jedito area. Um, because I, I did receive several concerns and issues that criminal issues are happening at certain residents on HPL and, um, Hopi is not intervening. And then some there it was on, um, Navajo police. But that didn't happen as well. So that was a concern of, of my area regarding the safety of that family in, in north of Jedito Chapter. So that was the reason why I was inquiring about this information. And, um, my, my other concern was also in regards to, um, census, uh, is the nation receiving funds on behalf of these individuals that are on the HPL? Or are they, or is Hopi receiving funds of these Navajo individuals that are residing on HPL? Was my, uh, second concern. Um, so I wanted to get, um, a family member that was running into this problem on the call. But, uh, I've been trying to, um, text her and she, she's not responding. So it's, it's a big concern and issue for, for me and my constituents, especially the safety of these individuals. And, um, do we just leave them out even though they're Navajo? Um, do we, do we just say we can't touch you? We can't advise you? We can't do anything with you because you signed the agreement? Um, so the way I understand of the paragraph is, well, if Hopi don't intervene, then that searches jurisdiction. And if one of the family member eventually gets killed, does that mean that Hopi will transport the body? Or would it be the Navajo Nation transporting the body again? And it's to that point towards like, how do we address this issue? How do we address this concern? So it, it's a very big concern that I have, especially for my constituents in Jedito area. So, um, Sinala, Madam Chair, if, um, if I, if I have the okay, if we can hear from the individual or the individual texts me back to, if we're still on this report, um, or if that is okay with you and the committee, I would like to have her express her concerns and issues or what we're coming into and falling into of this concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Honorable Vince James. Did you say that you have a constituent who's currently on the line ready to share her concern?
No, she hasn't texted me back yet, so. But if we're still on the report, I would like to invite, if we could give her some time to, to express her issues and concerns regarding the criminal activities that are happening on, in her area, her home state and then with others that are within the HPL. Agreement. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Sinala. Okay, committee members, are there any other questions at this time for the presentation that's been provided to us here at this time? Mr. Delmar, I'm going to go ahead and turn the floor back over to you so that you can answer and also address the concerns that have been shared with us by Honorable Vince James. Mr. Delmar?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't, Delegate James, thank you for your, uh, two points, uh, the two points that you raised. Um, unfamiliar with that area. I used to work in Delcon District in the north of Jedito. And even right there within Jedito too as well. Um, so go, go immediate by one, uh, regarding jurisdiction. I'm pretty sure that you're talking about the area of NPL, the Navajo Nation jurisdiction and some of the concerns that she has with regard to criminal activity within that area. Uh, to, to, from the area. And certainly, um, we can hear from her directly too as well. If you have her on the line, certainly we'd like to hear from her, um, or him. I don't, uh, the Chief of Police is on the air with me too, listening to this report and part, being part of this report too as well. So, uh, then, then, I just want to let you know that, yes, certainly we're, we, we wanted to hear from her regarding some of the concerns that she has concerning criminal activity um, within that area. But if she's living on the NPL side, uh, they certainly, we could respond to her, um, her. I don't, on the other side, if it happens on HPL, that belongs to, to the Hopi jurisdiction. Um, but what we're trying to do and what we're trying to arrange right now is what we refer to as a mutual aid agreement, uh, which means that if there is a, an incident, um, let's say in Jedito, uh, an emergency response type of a request or a call that we receive where there may be human life in jeopardy or, uh, the potential of great harm is, is, uh, present. Without a, uh, both jurisdictions would respond. And when they get to a scene, they would stabilize a scene, this scene, with first aid or with regard to safety measures and so on. And the idea is for the, uh, agency, whether it's a state agency, county, Hopi or even Navajo Nation to stabilize the area. And then once it's stabilized, then the appropriate jurisdiction would, would take over. That's happened a lot of times before. Uh, and that's just pretty much how we operate. But what we want to do is, um, put it on paper and have us agree to it. So that is the current initiative. And, um, I'd like to yield that to the guilty of some time to the Chief of Police to have him respond to your question too as well. Thank you, Delegate James. And Madam Chair?
Uh, this is Delegate James. Um, Sinala, um, Madam Chair, Honorable Charles Newton. I do have, um, Ms. Thomas on the line. Can we allow some time for her to address her concern and issue regarding HPL, the residence area regarding criminal activities? Sinala?
Yeah. Thank you, Sinala. Um, so right now, we did have a request from a committee member to allow a constituent of his to share her story about what they are facing. Um, we also have Director Delmar, who also stated on the record that he is open to hearing those concerns. This is a committee, uh, that does hear these types of concerns. So I will ask, is there a committee member who objects to allowing a constituent to share their experience on the Navajo Hopi land protection? Honorable James, the floor is yours and you can introduce your constituent. Thank you.
Uh, I had, um, Madam Chair, Honorable, um, Charles Newton, although members of LLC. I do have, um, my constituents, um, Ms. Thomas on the line. So I'll go ahead and, um, give her time to express the issues and concerns regarding criminal issues, her home state and the surrounding area on north of Jedito. Um, Ms. Thomas, we do have Division Director of Navajo Public Safety, Jesse Delmar on the line. And then also the Navajo Nation Chief of Police on the line as well. So the floor is yours, Ms. Thomas.
Hello?
Oh, I, I.
Okay, um, my name is Martin, um, Thomas. I live in about six miles north of Highway two sixty four in Jedito area, the Range Unit five seventy two in the Hopi partition land. And, um, yes, we, we do have, um, a lot of, uh, problems around our area. And, um, especially with, um, what with the Hopis, they always say no cutting wood, no hauling waters and all this and that. But from the Navajo, um, the NPL area people are still cutting fence and, um, cutting green trees and hauling water. And we get, um, reliable for it. And the Hopis, um, they come around and they say, you guys did this and that again. And we try telling them it was not us because we know what is going on. Every time I go to meetings with the Hopis, they tell us not to do this and that. So we go by their rules. But from the, the NPL area is the one that, um, giving us a lot of, um, problems. And also with the grazing, it's like that too. We pay for our grazing permit every year. And, um, when they cut fences, a lot of, uh, livestock that comes into the five seventy two range unit. And then, um, we, we responsible for that. Then they tell us that we overgraze. So, um, we're dealing a lot with the Hopis. But when we go to the chapter house and tell them that these people are doing this and that, but they always says, um, we've got nothing to do with it. That's the Hopi law. And, and I always tell them, I say, yeah, it's the Hopi law. But the Navajo Nation, um, people that live in the NPL areas are doing this and that. But we're trying to let you guys know that these are the people. We even write them their plate numbers and whatnot and give it to them to tell them not to do this, but no. And that's where we have a lot of problems with the NPL people. And also another thing is that we, they, um, we vote there at the chapters. And also when we ask for, um, help and they don't help us. They always say you guys are under Hopis. And then they, they've been giving us a hard time. Us people that live in the HPL area from the chapters, they always give us a hard time. We don't even get help. And when they issue out books, when we go over there, they say you guys are with Hopis, so we don't get nothing. And on top of that, just recently, people are applying for this and that. And we had a hard time to apply with that hardship. And I have an already at the house, which is my mom. She went through a lot with her health. Also, I have an uncle that has a heart problem. So it goes with my mom. And also I have a brother that is, um, going to hospital every weekend. So we spend a lot of money or gas money, pitching gas money for them to go to the hospital. Even the transport, we have hard time with it. So us people that live in the HPL area, it seems that we forgot all about us. We don't have no electricity. We don't have no running waters. And we're trying, asking for, um, a solar. We don't even have nothing. We still live like that all week. So when are they going to help us? When are they going to do something for us? And the people that, we still live in the HPL area. And same goes with the house. They need to remodel our home. My mom don't have a house. She live in my house. And then, um, same, same goes with my uncle. They live in my other house, so they don't have a house. And then my kids, they all live with me in my house. They're old enough, but, um, they don't have a house in the house. So that's where we have a lot of problems. And, um, I wish you, the Navajo Nation, could help us. And in some ways, that's what we need from you guys. We do vote for you guys, but in return, we don't get nothing. You, the chapter always says you guys are under Hopis. We need help. All these people that live near the highway, that are near the chapters that in, um, at the, um, NHA housing, those are the only people that get help. Us people that live in the HPL, we don't get help. So hopefully, you guys hear me, what I said, so you guys can do something about us that live in the HPL area. Yes, a lot of people, they move out. It's just me, my mom, my uncle, my kids and my brothers that we still live in that area. And we do need help. And I know, um, the council delegate was there one time. And he probably knows what I'm talking about. So hopefully, you guys understand what I said. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. That will, um, Ms. Thomas, thank you very much. And then Sinala, Honorable Charles Newton, that will, um, complete the concerns and response from Ms. Thomas and then from myself. Thank you for allowing me time for it. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Honorable You Do So? Go ahead.
Thank you ver- thank you very much. Um, yeah, I thank Ms. Thomas for, uh, for making her, um, presentation. And, um, Diego, um, I, I, oh, I wish, um, your chapter, who denied you services. If a, you know, I think we need to pull in the Attorney General and start vetting this because we have our own tribal government, our tribal system that are, provides services are related to, 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 to our, our, um, our citizens that live on HPL. You know, we still have a, a, um, we still have an obligation to a certain degree, but not in criminal or civil jurisdiction. Us such, eh, uh, 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 we still have authority to help families. And I think, um, the statement of, uh, the lady indicating that the chapter stating that you guys live on the other side, we can't serve you. I think we need to get Department of Justice. I think we need to get Department of Justice involved on this. And we need to get Genito chapter back to the drawing table and say, you cannot say this. Akoh, what's that? And then, and, and, uh, that's one area that I, uh, that I, uh, that I see. You know, um, as a, uh, member of the Navajo Nation, we haven't seen a really a community member suing the Navajo government, such as the chapter, for their statements, for their, uh, these chapter officials. Chapter officials shouldn't be saying that. Cause they are part of the direct services that's being provided to the Navajo people. When the chapter sales tax revenue is, um, distributed to the hundred ten chapters, the fifty fifty formula is included. And whether that person lives on HPL, who is a registered voter for Genito chapter, he or she is counted for those addition, for those revenues. So I do agree on that. Akoh, what's that? Our chapter officials, I always call them the local mafia.
That's true.
Akoh, eh, 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 yeah, that's, 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 that's the type of system that operates. About, uh, if they don't like a, a certain individual, they will choose not to entertain anything for you. That's just how, how the system works. I don't, um, you're absolutely right. Um, I serve, uh, myself and, uh, Honorable, um, Prince James, we serve on the Navajo Hopi Land Commission. And, um, I, I serve as the chairman and, uh, a couple of years ago, we got this issue in Surabaya. Where Navajo citizens living on NPL would go in and cut the HPL fence. And allow the animals to go in to graze. I don't understand, it's wood cutting the bar or the hole. Akoh, they're the ones that are ruining it for the Navajo citizens who live on HPL. I'll tell you, those Navajo citizens that live on HPL, don't look at the. They, oh, can you be, they're, uh, Rocky Ridge. Ah, they, what's up? Ah, they, not care, eh, okay, eh, so, ah, what's that, nah? They're not, she did, go, they, NPL, they get, uh, any, yeah, 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 they, they end up, um, allowing the livestock to go in. So a couple of years ago, the Hopi tribe impounded some livestock. So it's all about, uh, these not NPL there. And that was due to the fact that those Navajo citizens willingly cut. The NPL people cut that. Akoh, what's ego, yeah, nah, kago, but nah. We had to flip the bill to get those livestock out. Akoh, ah, they, they're not a horse, she, the, what's, uh, co, what's that? Akoh, I do understand what you're, what you're talking about. And, uh, uh, related to the animal issue, it's a trespass. Every time when the trespass happens, NPL citizens don't, don't understand this. That every day, the livestock crosses into HPL. It's counted against Nav- the, the, the Navajo Nation. We pay a trespass fee to them almost every year. And, um, and, uh, and the, uh, 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 attorney for Navajo Hopi Legal Services, uh, has information pertaining to this. We pay on the, on the trespass. Every day, it, it, it increases, every day. The other is that we pay for the, um, home site, annual, annual fee. We pay for the, um, the, uh, the, uh, the cornfield that they're supposed to be utilizing. Akoh, eh, every day, these, these costs, um, uh, uh, increase every day. Akoh, at the end, we, the Navajo Nation is, is, is paying, uh, pay, paying for these trespass things that happen from when NPL residents cut the fence. And I believe that's the reason of why the Navajo grazing, uh, uh, permit to be reallocated in NPL, they went with ten sheep units. Because they're still trying to assess how much livestock is in NPL. In nineteen seventy two, all grazing permits were canceled into eighteen eighty two executive order. Akoh, eh, eh, that's, eh, you know, um, there shouldn't have been much livestock until last year, don't that? Akoh, I see, I see, Diego, it, uh, what you talked about is something that is very critical. And, um, from the Navajo Hopi Land Commission, we're still trying to pay, pay for it. We're still paying for those trespass costs each year. Department of Justice gives us the amount, I think, just to be on the safe side, we, we pay, uh, I think roughly about two hundred fifty thousand dollars each year. Uh, the, 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 the official jud- judgment has not come out because we're just paying in advance. Because we are, we are anticipating that, that, um, when BIA comes down on the determination of how much it costs for the trespass per day, animal per day, uh, we, we're, we're, we're thinking that, that, that number is gonna be higher than, than, than what is normally anticipated. Akoh, even, uh, we pay a little bit more related to the trespass issue. And we know that every day it goes on. They, um, Allah, Jehovah, Tabashna, Rocky Ridge, Big Mountain area. Akoh, I see, I see, oh, it's ego, uh, bebe, they, 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 you know, the, 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 when the, when the Hopi tribe goes in to impound these, these, uh, livestock that are trespassing, that's when the, the, the NPL residents, they, 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 they allow them to, to go in. And, uh, whether, and then they go, but, uh, eh, ke, huh, and they, yeah, so, the, hey. Akoh, Navajo shouldn't be cutting those fence. That's always been my stance. And then, uh, I believe at one point, we were told, and then, even, uh, the, and that was one of the, uh, justification for one of the Navajo citizens that was reported to the, uh, to the, to the commission on the twenty third council. Akoh, eh, but nah, akoh, uh, see, uh, eh, I should be, no. But again, you know, that's a, um, that's a civil, that will fall under civil and criminal jurisdiction. And that's, uh, within the authority of the Hopi tribe. Akoh, whether that Navajo citizen allows his or her livestock from NPL to go on to HPL, it's up to the Hopi tribe to actually enforce that. But right now, the Hopi tribe is looking at the revenue, the trespass, e- every year, every year, yeah? And they, they'd rather get the money than, 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 um, go and round up and, um, impound these livestock. Because BIA has not determined that rental yet, or, or that trespass fee per animal per day. Even, uh, oh, yo, oh, yo, uh, 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 a lot, yeah, should be on the safe side. Because like I said, it's in the hand of BIA right now to determine that. We've been waiting for that. And once that determination of rate comes in, we, the Navajo Nation is anticipating that we're gonna have a credit. Akoh, eh, nah, so, 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 oh, what's that, nah? They, 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 and, and right now, they're just blaming you guys. You Navajo citizens that are on there, and, and I'll tell you, you Navajo citizens living on HPL, I really commend you. You pay grazing, grazing permit fees each year. I really commend you. I guarantee you, if we implement that same policy on Navajo, no, no, uh, eh, yeah, no, uh, 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 but you are subjected to the Hopi laws and to the rules. For your animals, because you are subjected to Hopi laws. And it goes under criminally and is held under the civil jurisdiction. Dude, on Navajo side, eh, it's like a, it's like a, how can I say? It's, it's, it's like a, uh, people treat grazing permit as an entitlement. Entitlement, the, eh, eh, welfare, no, eh, they, social security, nah, no, yeah, and so, that, key. But it's a permit. Even, uh, eh, uh, under the Hopi jurisdiction, you have a different set of rules and you have to abide by it. If not, the Hopi tribe will assess your cattle and impound it. And they will sell it and get their feet out and give you the, the, the remaining amount back. Eh, uh, uh, go, uh, nah, the, nature, eh, so, uh, uh. And then, and, uh, that's how they treat the grazing permit. I, I see it out there. And now, now, the grazing permit, but, uh, no, you're law, uh, that, that, they, uh. Um, eighty sheep units. They would, yeah, have, they have like eighty sheep, eighty horses and eighty cows. But yet, grazing. And you're getting that, 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 you know, chain. You're getting blamed for the people, the fence, and allow the livestock to, to, eh, eh. You know, I would advise that you keep a journal on, on, on account of your, that. You know, if they catch an illegal tree cutter, they can haul him out and, um, take him to, um, I believe right now, they're taking them down to St. John's or Holbrook. Because Hopi jail, they, they're condemned. You know, so, so, what's that, uh, uh, Akoh, eh, but nah, so, 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 what's that, uh, uh? I do, uh, understand what you're talking about. And, uh, this has the conversation that, you know, especially with the, um, with the, uh, livestock issue. We need, uh, I think you need to go ahead and, um, uh, pull in, uh, RDC. Because they are the oversight related to the, uh, grazing permits that were reissued to the, uh, N- NPL. I don't, uh, the other conversation is that, you know, with Navajo jurisdiction there, you know, um, Navajo doesn't have a law that says you cannot cut Hopi partition land fence. So, uh, 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 so, 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 even on the Navajo side, we, it, we, we try to, uh, even if we catch somebody catching, cutting that fence, we can prosecute that person. Because, um, it, uh, is, uh, that, that law only exists on the, uh, Hopi side. Akoh, eh, 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 every, like I said, every day, that cost is, is just increasing, increase. And, um, you know, um, I, 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 I just advise that my, uh, colleagues try to, um, 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 you know, um, um, try to educate yourself on the Hopi, Navajo partition land and, um, HPL, um, issues out there. Because we are paying the Hopi tribe each year. We are sending them a check each year. And, uh, and, 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 and due to the trespass, our own Navajo citizens are, 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 a lot, are, uh, how can I say? Sparking that. They are sparking that at their own will. They're not doing it to be, to, to say, hey, the, I don't, uh, get it, oh, yeah, you wait. So, 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 you know, I guarantee you, you know, they're gonna say, oh, we're not doing that, we're not doing that. But I guarantee you, you know, if the Hopi tribe starts to move to impound these livestock. NPL, they'll, they, eh, eh, oh, they, oh, they, eh, eh, need only. But yet, these individuals are, 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 are sparking these, um, these, these things. And it's creating a, uh, a, a, two nations not to agree or to, or to, 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 to come together. And, and that's what happened in Tubus City. That's what happened to my community. We're trying to, we were trying to get fiber to, to cross the Hopi, the, 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 uh, a, a portion of Hopi jurisdiction. And they brought up these issues. Navajos, you don't listen. No, that's the reason why we don't want to approve right away. And I see, I see, oh, they, I, I had to literally intervene with the Hopi government to get right away to come across Patrick Canyon to bring fiber optic into Tubus City. Eh, cut today, as of, actually, Christmas Day, Christmas Day, my community will be, will, will, will have the fiber construction completed. Akoh, it really took me working with my, um, or, or, with my neighboring tribe to get that accomplishment. Uh, for future, um, um, obligations and future, um, working with the, um, um, uh, uh, our, our neighboring tribe. But, uh, you know, in a way, that some Navajo families spark some of these things and the Hopi tribe don't, don't like it at times. I don't, uh, uh, Mr. Delmar, they, uh, eh, eh, uh, they, they don't have jurisdiction criminally or civilly. But, uh, this issue that you're talking about, it's gonna take, uh, Navajo leadership to go, come, go back to the table with the Hopi tribe to try to iron out some of these issues. And, uh, eh, 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 Akoh, eh, eh, yeah, uh, uh, oh, bah, uh, uh, I really commend you guys living out there in HPL. Ah, ni'hit'e ya, ke'ya'arobikita no'ch'atda. Ni'ke'ya'arob'na'tah, no'ch'atda. Oh, hayut'na'kihe's, kihe's kah'ah. Ak'oh bab'na'che'ah, eh, ah, ke'ya'ho no'ch'atda, ons'en. Oh, wet'ana'sh'eh. Shin'le, um, I, I come from the western portion of the nation and, uh, the Jaway fence is about less than a mile away. So I've been affected by the joint use area, HPL and the Bennett Freeway. A'zi yevo, eh, ba, ba, ni'hit'ana hot'i, I understand them. Ak'oh enna'tah'oh, zan'eh, bishma's, an, di'te, eh, di'te, eh, dishno'ba'ya'shtio, do'da, do'da sh'oh, tna'dan'sh'le. This guy's lying, da, do'da sh'oh, ni'le. But I've seen it. Ch'ke'eh, I've been so little, ch'ke'eh, eh. My grandmother, she still hasn't moved off of there. Caroline Tuhani. She still lives in HPL. Ah, ch'ab'ad, um, uh, sh'ma, sh'mayaj'oh, ko'osna'che'ta'ha, ch'mab'ana'che'nta'ha. Ak'oh wet'ana, ke'ya'ho, eh. Ak'oh do'tan'ko'osna'dan'sh'le, ta'ha, zan'ge. Ak'oh, oh, wet'abah's bit'ol'leh, so, eh, ke'eh, eh, eh, wet'ah. Sh'at'z'oh, I know, I know, it took, it was, some time, but just to shed some light to, 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 to your, um, to your issues that you have here. Um, Ms. Thompson and Honorable James, thank you for, uh, bringing this issue to the, uh, to this body. Yeah.
Madam Chair.
Uh, yes, who, who, uh, who, I guess, who is it?
Um, um, good afternoon, Madam Chair. My name is, um, Alberto Pashlikai. I'm with the Office of the President and Vice President. I do apologize, um, I was on another call when you were doing the, um, the beginning, the beginning part of the agenda and I wasn't able to formally announce myself to let you know that I am online to, just to listen in on behalf of the President's office. And, um, for those that are listening as well, Madam Chair and Vice Chair and then members of the, um, Law and Order Committee, good morning. Um, as I just previously stated, my name's Alberto Pashlikai. I serve as an executive staff assistant to the President, uh, our Office of President and Vice President. Ado, ado na'nsh'le, ni'ke'eh, to'ri'ti'ni'nsh'le, k'nyaa'ani, eh, bash'sh'chin, na'sh'ez'at'ka, eh, dash'ch'ar'oh, to'ri'kon'je. Eh, dash', um, da't'ado, to'ha'ak'le, da'do'sh'ada'ah, to'ri'kon'je, eh, a'de, eh, yas'in, na'sh'ado'ah, sh'yah'oh, eh. Ak'ot'ana, ho'khati, and the na'ba'la'sh'kl'ansh'le. And, um, if I may, and, um, I just wanted just to provide additional information in regards to, um, what, um, Vice, um, so had, uh, mentioned in regards to the services that are being denied, um, to individuals that had just spoken previously for, to render chapter services. I know that all of, uh, I know that all one hundred and ten chapters, um, are operating under the Title Twenty-Six. And in Title Twenty-Six and Section Two, if they would look at the, um, the definitions for chapter membership, um, it gives you basically a, 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 the definition, and I'm just gonna go ahead and read it. It says, "For voting purposes and participation in chapter government, all registered voters of the chapter or those representing such voters pursuant to the governing models adopted by the TCD, um, Committee of the Navajo Nation Council pursuant to this act." And then B, it says, "For the purposes of services and benefits, all travel members, young and old, who either reside within or registered in the chapter." Um, basically, that definition gives the authority for individuals to be rendered services even, um, um, like for example, what we, uh, I also, I am a Navajo Nation Election Administration voter registrar. And so when we go through our training, we are informed that when we register people that, that are wanting to become a registered member of a particular chapter, that when they've signed that, um, voter registration form, they are automatically entitled to whatever services that the chapter is rendering. I know that, we know we've come across complaints, um, from the, from various, um, constituents throughout Navajo Nation where some chapters require that their individual be registered for six months in order to receive services. But however, when they come before us, we, um, counter back to the, to the local chapter and the administration and let them know that according to Title Twenty-Six, they are a registered member based on the voter registration stat, based on their active voter registration status and that the chapter should not be refusing services on that. If that's something that, um, just to provide clarification on that part, that's all I'd like to provide. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, for that, Mr. Pashlikai, and welcome to the Law and Order Committee meeting. Uh, and it's, uh, I, I do appreciate you sharing that information, uh, with us. Uh, perhaps you should be the Director of, of DCD 'cause, um, I don't think that that information is being shared. Um, and as was, um, provided by the, it's great that you are on the, on the call and that you did have the opportunity to hear the testimony being provided, um, again, by a constituent, um, of, of the, um, of the, of the area there. Um, but I think as Honorable Otto So' stated, you know, there's so many issues right now. My, my big concern is how, you know, or whether these families are getting assistance during COVID and what kind of assistance is being offered. And I know in my chapter, um, we do have one individual who believes himself to be so powerful, um, that they, you know, uh, give these services only to certain people in the community. And, um, and it, and it's a constant battle, um, trying to get our people the services that they need. Um, but I think the only way that this is actually going to resolve itself is if we share information on what kind of services are being provided. Um, and then there are proper, um, documentation, um, on who is asking for services and what kind of services they're asking for. Uh, again, this all does go back in some cases to, um, individuals, sometimes just one individual. Um, and it's a real shame, um, that these kind of games are being played. Uh, but I appreciate you being on the call. Um, and you're, I think, Honorable Otto So', I would like to actually, a, I, I, well, perhaps Law and Order Committee can think about this. How can we listen to the testimony of those living on the Navajo Hopi land partitioned areas and ask the simple question of what services are provided to you through public safety? And what services would you like to see provided to you by public safety? Um, I think that that is a very simple question, um, that we do need to hear this information. Um, but, you know, it's always a question of how are we going to do this, you know, how, especially during COVID, how do we, you know, how do we plan for something like this? I think prior to COVID, what we did at Law and Order Committee was we visited almost every chapter. Uh, and it was, you know, it was, um, it was exhausting, but we actually got to go into the community and we heard testimony provided, uh, by many of the people in the communities on, um, on what was happening with public safety. So I think that we do need to move forward and we need to have that discussion. Honorable Otto So', I'm gonna leave that to you, um, on how you want to, uh, how you want to address that and how we should move forward. But I think it is an important question, especially during COVID. And I think I was watching the news this morning and, uh, uh, there was a doctor from, um, Seattle who said, uh, that people are becoming more lax now because of this vaccine, that they're letting their guards down. And, um, you know, and, and of course, we are already hearing of the, the, the potential third wave that's gonna be coming about because we don't know if this vaccine is going to be, um, you know, i- if it's really the, the save all of, of, of all vaccines, you know, that is gonna, that's going to, um, you know, help us to, 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 um, get back to where we were before. Um, and so I'm, I'm worried now. I know, um, a- and again, you know, e- everything kind of falls back on this vaccine. But, you know, what I worry about is the fact that we may be looking at a third wave and if we can help the people there in that community, um, address some of these issues, I think that that's something that we should do. So Honorable Otto So', I know that you are the Chair for, um, the Navajo Hopi, um, Subcommittee. So perhaps we can, um, schedule a time where the Navajo Hopi committee can meet with Law and Order Committee and we can together hear testimony, um, provided to us by the constituents there and then maybe even invite RDC as well, um, to the conversation. So just something to put out there. Okay, so with that, um, committee members, are there any other questions? Honorable Otto So', go ahead.
Yes, I really, uh, thank you for, for that, uh, suggestion. And, um, one thing that I really want to, um, really have in mind is that the Navajo Nation Council, we did our job. Yin na'nish'eh ya. And, um, we've been doing our jobs for so many years. We're a body of the Navajo Nation Government that makes laws and we are charged with appropriating dollars to the programs. And these programs are under the executive branch. Each year during the budget season, they come before us and tell us, this is how much money we need to have this program function. Whether it's to the chapter, whether it's to a program of public safety, to, uh, rangers or whatever, social services. Base a budget that they, on the his, we did our job. The Navajo Nation Council is not the labor, is not the, uh, backhoe operator, is not the person that's supposed to run the program. The high responsibility lies within the executive branch. And I believe there's failures. And I think we need to start having, my recommendation, Madam Chair, is that, uh, I think we need to pull the speaker in and start looking at having hearings related to, to direct services across the Navajo Nation. And particularly this, this, this unique situation of, uh, of HPL. Our Navajo citizens who live on HPL. How is the Navajo chapter government trying to assist these families out there? How is public safety trying to, um, bring and shed light to the jurisdictional issues in that area? How is, um, the dollars from social services being rendered to these, to, to, for direct services for our Navajo citizens across the Navajo Nation? I believe it, they might have put their guard down, ons'en. Yevo sh'te'ix'ah. And it's going on in my community, I will tell you that. I have people coming up to me telling me, this office is, is, I went there, I haven't get any response and all this stuff. And I just tell them, I said, uh, if council starts to intervene and starts to step in. At one point in time, my, uh, my colleagues, we were told by the President that, "Council, leave my staff alone. They work for me, they don't work for you." Separation of powers, eh, ni. And I believe that's where we need to start looking at having hearings across the Navajo Nation in aspects of how is direct services being provided to the Navajo people. And this will shed light to these dollars that we appropriate each year to travel programs. Halit eh'wa la'e ya a'de. Eh, nish'ke'e ya, ha't'at, ne'yaka'and'at'wo. Particularly this family. While the chapter of Jedato told this family, "You are included with Hopi." Ko'jeto nahat'et'eh'da. You're basically saying that. We're gonna, we choose not to give you services because you live on Hopi jurisdiction. But to, um, Alberto Pashlikai's comments related to, uh, uh, um, the chapter services cited in, in the, in the law, they are truly citizens and they are obligated to be fun. Eh, dash'ha, is'ob'ki'dach'it'ch'it'ansen. Oh hunna, ne'na'ha no'ha, sh'yon'depeh, na'do'tla'le'ko'ech'iyan'na'do'neha'no. That's the reason why I'm here, uh, I'm here on Facebook. I don't have time for that. I always say this on council floor. If you have Facebook, you have too way, too much time on your hands. A'it'ah, ko'jeto'ch'oh, nish'oh, ch'oh, nish'oh. Eh, na'ar'ad, int'a'e ya, eh, feh'ana, nish'vin'ch'is, nish'eh. And I believe the nation has lost sight of the Navajo people out there. Ne'v'cha enda ha'yf'eh. Ha't'ist'ob'ki'dach'ih'ke'onsen. If I were the President of this tribe right now, I guarantee you, I would be firing division directors left and right. I would do that. Because the Navajo people is not something to play with. There's nothing to act like a three-year-old in front of them. There's lives at stake every day. And this family member here, this individual who was on the line. Eh, jan'na hot'i, ko'te'eh, sh'k'ah'oh, che. Ko'ko'do'be'sh'mans, an, ko'do'ad'ani, be'has ani, ko'do'ade, ya, do'be'sh'mans, ch'at'eh, ah. The branch that's supposed to provide those services to this family that live there, that branch is not doing their service. And I believe we need to have a thorough conversation. And I think, uh, with tomorrow's Chairman and Vice Chair's meeting, we need to bring this to the attention of the, um, Vice Chair and the Chairman. And maybe we can go ahead and start moving forth with community hearings related to direct services. And would it have a public hearing across the Navajo Nation on how the current administration is providing services, direct services to the Navajo people? Because right now, Ms. Thompson, the Navajo Nation Government in direct, providing direct services has pushed you aside. Does that spark you to take the Navajo Nation to the courts? I would try. Maybe then and there, the Navajo Nation Government will start listening to you. But I assure you, from a legislative standpoint, our duties, nich'eh, bishma's, an'eh, j'ke'e ya, beson'ta'ti'ta. Do'pe'has ani, te'eh eh. Mich'el hin'a, nish'ee's eh. Every division director came to our, to, uh, to the council and said, "We want this much money to provide direct services to the Navajo people." And that's including you, Ms. Thompson. The division director spoke on behalf of you and said, "I want this much money so I can provide public safety protection. I want this much money for this program so I can, uh, provide services through the Navajo chapter for this person." And I believe that, 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 the administration has lost sight of providing direct services. And when and how do we hold the individuals who are in charge of providing direct services responsible? Oh, wet'ah. And, uh, I, 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 I will reach out to the Speaker. And I believe, uh, if it's here, Law and Order, it's that budget finance, there's some sort of issue there too. There's issues at, uh, RDC. There's issues at Health and Human Service Committee. And as a legislative body, I believe that's a better approach to identify and clearly get a report out on how much direct services have been provided to the Navajo people. This year, we have appropriated, appropriated a hundred and sixty-seven million dollars, Navajo dollars, to the budget. Last year, a hundred and sixty-seven million. The year before, a hundred and seventy-seven million. Oh, wet'ah, ho'ol'jish'oh. These division directors are making as much as almost a hundred thousand dollars a year. And managers. Ak'oh, ko'te'eh, you hear this testimony? Ko'te'eh, sh'k'ah'oh, che, ch'eh'ich'eh na. At some point, we have to hold our division directors and the managers if responsible for not providing these direct services in all aspects. Mich'ich'oh, the bishma's, on'be'neh, ke'at'ah. Maybe if, if, if the things were changed around and we had the authority to, to, uh, provide direct services to the Navajo Nation, maybe it would have been different. But currently, how the Navajo Nation law is structured is that the executive branch provides the direct services to the Navajo people. And clearly, this family member and these families that live on HPL. Che'ha'jo'ba'ik'at'eh'in. Ch'ong in'ni, che'ha'at'eh'in. And it's being that, it's, uh, it is at the expense of the executive branch who is responsible for providing these direct services. We all approv, uh, voted in favor for the comprehensive budget for the executive branch, for their programs. They got about a hundred million dollars, Ms. Thompson. That's how much money we appropriated to the executive. That's how much money we appropriated to the executive branch to provide direct services to you, to the Navajo people. Last year, that's, I think, last year was a hundred and two million. We did our job. And these programs that are supposed to provide direct services. They comprehend some doubt. I wasn't fed by the Navajo silver spoon. I know how it feels to have no resources. I know how it feels. I know how it feels. I've been there. I've been at the flea market selling as a little kid. While the Navajo Nation Government was raking in resources from coal revenues, power plant dollars. And that's including you, Ms., Ms. Thompson. The branch that's supposed to provide direct services to help you and your family in the needs of the Navajo people is not being rendered. I'm very fortunate to have those views and leadership and values installed, uh, installed in me. But these are the very things that affect our Navajo people. And that is very, very true and going on out there. This is reality. But those are just my recommendation, Madam Chair, that we have a discussion with the Chair, with the Chairman and Vice Chair leadership.
If this is something that this committee can do. And that is, um, to have a review, a hearing, and to ask those tough questions of our division directors. And to ask for public comments on the services that these, uh, these, uh, division directors, or I guess these divisions and departments should be providing, whether the people are receiving those, um, services. So, I, I'm just kinda thinking in, in terms of what Honorable Otto Soh stated, and asking those tough questions of, you know, whether our people are receiving the services that council is, you know, providing funds for. I think that those are, um, they go hand in hand. And I think that this committee could do that for every one of the divisions and departments that we oversee. And we can ask those tough questions. So in a sense, it would be an evaluation. Is that something that this committee can do, Mr. Cook?
Okay, that's a pretty, uh, extensive question, Madam Chair. Um, however, I'll try to be, um, as diligent in responding to the question. As far as, um, you know, it's gonna be a very distinct area of a lot of the areas that you're, you're requesting, including a lot of the divisions and departments. I think at this point, um, as you're aware, I'm into my third month here, almost my fourth month, but I'm gonna get extensive, uh, information directly from Ms. Bobrov. I know she's listening on the Hess meeting, but I can surely get with her as soon as possible. Maybe by no later than tomorrow, get back with you on that question.
That would be great, Mr. Cook. And I think that that would allow, uh, people to really come forward. And again, you know, if council is providing these monies to these divisions and to these departments, and they're telling us that they need it, it just to me sounds as if it would be something that can be done. You know, just asking that simple question of the public. So, yes, if you can look into that, I think that that would be great. In the meantime, committee members, are there any other questions or comments at this time before I turn the floor back over to Mr. Delmar?
Delicate James here.
Honorable Vince James, go ahead.
Um, I, I believe, um, Marlene. Yeah, okay again by the committee. I believe Marlene's mom is on the line, and she would like to, um, share some information as well.
Committee members, there is a request by one of our colleagues to have a constituent provide testimony on the issues that are currently before us in the report that has been provided. Are there, is there anybody who objects to allowing this constituent to provide testimony to this committee? Honorable Vince James. Honorable Eugene So, go ahead.
Is that a point of order? We're doing the report, are we? What, is this my question?
Your, I'm sorry, I, I missed that. Honorable Eugene, so your point of order is, is to what?
I thought we're on the reports, not testimonies. That's what my point of order is.
Uh, yes, we are on the report. Um, but these are people who are, uh, talking about the issue regarding the report.
Madam Chair.
Honorable Otto Soh.
Um, I did, I did, I'm a son of a. I'm a son of a. I don't have a. I did. He, he, he. I'm a son, me. Oh, I do concur that we need to hear her. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and allow, um, for Nkemason to, uh, provide us that information of what they are currently facing there in the Navajo Hopi land. It is part of the report. Uh, so with that, Honorable James, if you want to, um, introduce her, I'm gonna go ahead and give you the floor since, uh, she is your constituent. Thank you, I'm going back on mute.
I see how the, uh, she never do committee members of, um, the on order committee, although individuals that are on the line. Uh, I see how you didn't meet all the, uh, Kodo she, she might be. But we did ask her. She's a hunche, that's what we had to do. Uh, Shema. Marlene. I guess we lost connection.
Hello?
Marlene?
Hello, yeah, I'm here. You guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Um, quite it, um, the most. But we did ask, we should not, uh, the.
Um, Shema, eh, I they did it to the, uh, uh, this.
Oh, okay.
Um, she, uh, um, in, um, snowflakes, uh, to take care of some business. So, eh, I asked her, Shema, so you know. It's not, uh, uh.
Okay, I don't know if you want to respond to, um, um, Honorable Otto Soh. I, I know you, I don't know if you have any questions in regards to the process of how you would want to move forward in regards to possibly filing or suing Malfor Nation for lack of service. Or we could provide you a phone number to Honorable Otto Soh. And he can, you guys can chat on that issue separately.
Hmm. Eh, yeah, I think it's, um, better that way. Although it got, but at the minute, I was just a student, um, um, Navo Nation, or lack of, um, support from the chapter. I think it's better to do it that way too. Just, um, I let, um, to add on, he can't yet. Uh, I let them need to, uh, come here, you guys, and the hope it, eh, done his no. Eh, yo, I mean, eh, yo, um, because the knee, oh, no. Even though it's, um, um, Hopi petition, then I need to done here, and they. That's how my mom is. Eh, been in, uh, so to, so yo, at the meeting, gonna rather. Need, um, she, she, she's really sensitive right now. Yeah, gonna, it's, uh, but it's nice, nah, uh, I, I, um, I let. Meeting good, I, you know, but that is, uh, now. Although, I, I know that, yes, she, that, yeah. Yeah, then, uh, they that all started, say, eh, that, eh, yeah, go, um, if I did, I, she, yeah, pass out, now, that, uh, meeting go. We need to, um, California, Prescott, Phoenix, and to Washington, not a, but I, so she, she's well-known. Of course, I, eh, um, but I, I, yeah, um, she, yeah, pass out, I need to, you know. And, um, I, eh, up to this day, eh, she. I let, not, I, yeah, not, uh, had, oh, I see, for sure. Um, but, but, and she kind of had that little bit of dementia after she had that, um, heart problem. Even, uh, yeah, go, um, which, which, and I, nah. I told the best. However, we have livestock at the house. I, eh, they, yeah, yes. For one, she run, don't, then, I, eh, they, yeah, next, though. Cause her trailer was repo. Back about, what, seven years ago? It got trailer, but, uh, not seen. That was in my dad's name. For eight and other, can I, you let on, uh, that trailers repo. I don't, but when I get it, yeah. I don't, I want them, I just, I, I, I let the snake went in. And we didn't know that she lived with snakes for the past three years. They, one day, and then, we found out that, um, that snake that was inside her, oh, come. So, eh, I don't, I don't, oh, it's, no, no, no. My mom. But I'm been, but I'm, so I need to, that, you know. There's a big tree right there, I guess there's, um. Not sure, she, um, but I'm, but he, not on that, it's, she, she goes inside, I let, under, but the ground, they, oh, come, yeah, and that, no. She, oh, I, um, it's a, but I know. Three years, she, no, it's not. So, eh, eh, I, eh, they, yeah, yes. She run, it's, eh, now, but she lives in my, my other house, eh, she does. Eh, I, I, I want, but, and, uh, and they. Eh, 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 the, eh, oh, you, huh, I, oh, you, huh, after what happened. Eh, this, she, the, I, the, I, 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 I. So, I don't, but I, eh, and three acres, and, uh, I'm not, uh. She don't have no three acres. So, all my, my family, they all under my roof. And my three acres, that's too small. I don't, so, uh, so, no, no, she. I have five kids, I don't, so, 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 I don't, so, not, I, 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 I. Eh, come, who, one, on the, eh, but, that, don't, me. It's not been, you, to, not, the, so, oh. But her, but she, eh, eh, and. I, I don't, I don't, don't, I just, uh, not, then, to me. I don't, cause I should, eh, she, my, I just, I, 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 Mary, um, T, gay. Yellow hair was her. Married name too, but she moved out long time ago. Oh, when it's, I, yeah, and, uh, when it's, I, 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 I. Now, well, nobody will occasion, though, when, um, that, eh, I, 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 I. She left. She's in Sanders, somewhere, but she, uh, not, I, 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 eh. Um, my aunt, eh, and she had that dementia, and she don't even talk no more. So, yes, she, uh. Oh, I sound, eh, that, eh, then, cause that's, if I, yeah, I, eh, cause fifteen years, then, I, you, but I know. Eh, oh, Shema, but, no, uh. That's, it's not, uh, eh, um, what's, Robert, boy. Eh, come, eh, 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 I, Shema, I, eh, Hopi, eh, eh, I don't, but I, 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 I. Cause she left a long time ago. Though, I, it's, uh, uh. Cause they, uh, but, but, three acres, and I gave this, give it to my mom. I don't, so, so, let, I, I, eh, the, one of my cousin's sister, I want, I, 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 eh, oh, so, that, I, 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 I. So, eh, I, I, eh, she brother, eh, I, 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 I. Eh, the, I, 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 not, so, he goes to hospital every weekend. So, eh, I, the three acres, if you, oh, so, but, no, uh. Eh, the, that's, it's not, so, but that. So, 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 don't, I, eh, in, in, I, I. I don't, they, Hopi, that, eh, who, now, but this, eh, eh, I, that, Robert has to write that statement. He has to okay in order for, for us to, 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 um, have that statement. I don't, that, eh, didn't, much, eh, I, I, eh, in, my, I, 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 eh, been, it's, oh, no. So, your kids can have the house back. So, of course, it don't need that, eh, and up to this day.
Now for Division of Transportation, Greater. Although it's late to give lift in the the odd and those individuals that are living in the HPL. And NDOT is out there that lifts up the blades, the roads. It just bypasses them. And they have very, very, um, bumpy, sandy roads that's not even graded for them. Um, and then I tried, we tried our best to advocate for at least a solar panel from Intu A. Uh, to at least assist them with that. To assist with at least some kind of power, but still had to go through HPL. So with NDOT, they actually, we've been working on the agreement with Hopi Transportation. Um, regarding the road there. But, uh, Intu A was just, it was very lengthy. It was just a, a continuous response of no, um, to provide them power, to provide them solar power. So through the tariffs fund. Oh, what, oh, it should be my end of the week. Me here the night. Oh, she did add it there, you have to add it. The whole nine, the other one, she not leave that yet, it's a good. Yeah, but it, 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 it's not, it, it's not. It's not a good. Oh, I had a, it's not, they ask me to be honest with you. Oh, that's it, it's in the shit, don't know that the sound so hard, please, no, no. I do division directors that you'll need, ah, who not at, ah. Oh, that I have been. Of course. It's a hit, ah, though, but had, but, but honest with the mouth, ah, true. At then. Okay, so it, it, it could be, ah, that it needs to know, then that's the, okay. Okay, okay, I, 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 okay, be.
The President, that you are taking note of, of, of these, of this, of this matter. People's lives are not something to play with. We provide you a salary and with benefits. We compensate you guys correctly. I was asked to have direct services provided to them. I really hope that you get this message to the President's office and to the Chief of Staff. That there's an issue, that you need to shed light to. Other than that, I will continue to push for public hearings. And Hahishan need all this, didn't they? Adaya hot abah, Mr. Esu Kai. Oh, I really, 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 um, commend you for being on the line, if you're still on the line.
Um, yes, your delegate, so I'm here.
Okay. I call all public issues here, I really, really, um, hope that you get this information to him. Navajo people needs help, not only in the big communities, those forgotten areas, the communities out there. I was out in Bitter Springs, Arizona. All of the Nekah at the Nana is on Colorado River, you know? I told, I told, I did, I don't like, I don't, 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 don't hear car needs a name. This is in Bitter Springs, Arizona. We have Navajo families living off the grid up there. Hey, bye bye, I should hear. I represent the community of Tubus City. The Yeebo, nah, the Yeebo. So, I see actually balance and go, eh, eh, bah, yes, the door, uh, that's all I have to say for now. And, uh, uh, is there any questions, any other questions from the, uh, committee members? If not, go once, twice, three times, with the motion in place and with the second in place, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, call, um, Sherelle to call for a roll call vote. Or Lorraine, can you do a roll call vote?
Um, Honorable, Honorable So, this is Delegate James.
Mr. James, go ahead.
Um, are we going to allow, um, Mr. Delmar or any others to respond?
Um, I, and I, um, I, uh, with the response from, um, from the, from Department of Justice and, uh, related to the jurisdictional issues, A G, A, A, I believe that, that, that is their, their stance related to the direct services, uh, to public safety, that the criminal and the civil jurisdiction belongs to the Hopi, uh, uh, jurisdiction. But, um, what I would suggest is that, um, like I said, is that I think we have to push for a public hearing to go ahead and, uh, shed light to, to this, um, to what is really going on and, uh, how the disparity is because I don't, uh, could, I thought our legislature, our legislature council has been researching out what we as a committee could do, uh, to provide public hearings in our, in our oversight, to get a determination of what type of direct services have been rendered to all, uh, Navajo citizens of, um, throughout the Navajo Nation. And, uh, eh, 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 but the, but the greater issue is bringing this before, uh, uh, Navakia and I think if we get it before Navakia Committee, we will have a, a, a greater force from the, um, council delegates out there representing their districts out there to see how these tribal dollars are really rendered and utilized. Eh, day, what the, uh, well, with that, um, Madam Chair is back on the line, let me turn the gavel back over to her.
Hi, Karen, Honorable Otto So participating in the chair. I have drives, I'm driving into Window Rock right now and there's an area where I'll listen to questions for a few minutes. Uh, so, um, committee members, are there any questions or comments at this time before, before we proceed forward to the vote? Hey, with that, um, Sherelle, are you back on the line?
Yeah, I'm here.
Please assist us with doing the roll call vote, please, thank you.
Okay, Honorable Vince James, how do you vote?
Delegate Jane votes green.
Honorable Vince James votes green, Honorable Eugene So, how do you vote? Honorable Otto So, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Honorable Otto So votes green, Honorable Edmund Yazi. Honorable Eugene So, how do you vote?
Vote Eugene, shout, oh, yeah.
Honorable Eugene So votes green, Honorable Edmund Yazi. Chair, you have three in favor, zero opposed, two not voting, which includes the chair not voting.
Thank you for that, Sherelle. So with that, committee members, the report that has been provided to us by Department of Public Safety, uh, Executive Director Jesse Delmar and then Sulte Francisco, Chief of Police, Navajo Nation Police Department, regarding the Hopi partition lands, on coverage issues and other matters relating to the area is hereby accepted. So with that, committee members, we move down to the next item on the agenda, which is item number six, full business, there is none. Item number seven, new business, we do have two legislations before us at this time. Legislation zero three zero eight dash twenty, do we have the sponsor, um, Delegate Wilson Stewart on the line?
Yes, sponsor.
Thank you, uh, for, for answering, so with that, um, Angie, can you go ahead and, um, read legislation zero three zero eight dash twenty, onto the record, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Law and Order Committee, you have your proposed Navajo Nation Council Resolution, Twenty First Navajo Nation Council, Second Year Twenty Twenty, introduced by, um, Delegate Wilson Stewart. Uh, tracking number is zero three zero eight dash twenty, and action relating to Law and Order, uh, Budget and Finance, Navakia Committees, and the Navajo Nation Council approving the deposit and allocation of fines collected from curfew violations related to COVID- nineteen, public health emergency orders to the Navajo Nation Division of Public Safety. And the, um, the legislation goes on to the Navajo Nation Council, Madam Chair.
Thank you for reading that into the record, Lorraine. So with that, um, committee members, we do have the sponsor who is on the line, can I get a motion to hear this legislation?
Motion by Vice Chair.
I'll go ahead and we'll do the motion by Honorable Otto So and the second by Honorable Vince James. Uh, so with that, Delegate Stewart. Um, well, committee members, as we normally do here at our committee, we have, uh, two choices. One is we can go ahead, if, if any of the committee members has a question, we will go ahead and proceed and let Delegate Stewart present his legislation. If there are no questions, we can proceed forward to the vote. So I will ask the question, committee members, are there any questions for Delegate Stewart regarding this legislation? Okay, I don't hear anything from anyone, so with that, committee members, if we, if there are no objections, we'll go ahead and proceed forward to the vote. Can somebody mute their phone, it sounds like they're underwater. Okay, there are no questions for you at this time, Delegate Stewart, so the committee is gonna go ahead and proceed forward to the vote. Sherelle, can you assist us with the roll call vote, please?
Okay, roll call vote, Honorable Vince James, how do you vote?
Delegate Jane votes green.
Honorable Vince James votes green, Honorable Eugene So, how do you vote? Honorable Eugene So votes green, Honorable Otto So, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Honorable Otto So votes green, Honorable Edmund Yazi, how do you vote? Honorable Edmund Yazi, how do you vote? Chair, you have three in favor, zero opposed, two not voting, which is including the chair not voting.
Thank you, uh, for that, um, Sherelle. So that committee members, legislation zero three zero eight dash twenty does pass at Law and Order. Uh, Delegate Stewart, um, thank you for your time, you're hereby excused and this legislation does proceed forward to Budget and Finance.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair and LLC members.
Okay, with that, committee members, we do move down to the next item on the agenda, legislation number zero two nine two dash twenty. Um, do we have the sponsor, Delegate Daniel So on the line? Second call for Delegate Daniel So. Third and final call for the Chairman of the House Committee, Delegate Daniel. Okay, let's go ahead and, um, move legislation number zero two nine two dash twenty onto the next Law and Order Committee Agenda. Uh, so, um, Angelita, if you could relay that information to Lorraine and let her know that at the next Law and Order Committee meeting, we'll go ahead and, um, uh, ha, I, I guess, we'll have some action on legislation number zero two nine two dash twenty. So with that, committee members, we are now, thank you, Ms. Benali, now we are down to item eight on the agenda. Before we do a motion to adjourn, is there any announcements that need to be made at this time?
Madam Chair.
Hope, go ahead.
Good afternoon and seasons greetings, everyone, I appreciate the discussion today very much and those are issues that are very important to our people who have been affected by the land dispute. Um, I just wanted to ask the committee, January twenty fifth is the, um, winter council session, do you wanna move that meeting to January fourth? That's my question, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you for touching that. Okay, so we'll go ahead and we'll, uh, we'll do that, so there is, um, we'll go ahead and move the January, the last Monday of January's meeting to the first Monday in January. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Hope. Um, committee members, do we, I don't think we need to, go ahead and send Lorraine an email to let her know that because of, um, winter session, that we're gonna go ahead and have our Law and Order Committee meeting on the first Monday of, of February. Uh, the other thing as well, committee members, I'm sorry?
Yeah, um, it was, um, I think first, the first one you said January first, but it is February first and that's what I'll note, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benali, thank you. Uh, committee members, we also, um, are going to be, uh, asking if there's any items that need to be added to the agenda. I know that, uh, as Chair of Law and Order Committee and I believe Honorable Vice Chair Otto So has also, um, asked similar questions, uh, regarding the Tribal Law and Act. Um, I believe about one time, we questioned why the Navajo Nation hasn't opted into this. Uh, we did ask the, I believe it was Judicial and DOJ, Department of Justice, and we never got a response back. So, um, Angie, if you could relay to Lorraine to put that on the, um, the, the, uh, next Law and Order Committee meeting, the agenda, um, so that we can have that discussion about the Tribal Law and Order Act, because I know at the Tribal Interior Budget Council meetings that we've been having, that question has come up, um, on several occasions as to why Navajo or what Navajo's stance on, uh, the Talaua is. Um, and have this conversation, especially with new, with the new administration coming in, so if we can, um, I, the next, uh, agenda, uh, as a report, I think we can, um, maybe ask those questions and start working towards, uh, figuring out whether we can, um, proceed forward, um, with Talaua or what the Navajo Nation's stand is on Talaua. Um, so I do wanna add that onto the record. And then the last thing is, um, we do have, we may possibly, um, have a Navakia meeting, although it's not scheduled yet, I don't believe it is, um, we, I know Speaker did mention it this morning, um, but I think that they were pushing for Wednesday. I don't know if we're gonna still have it, as, um, as, uh, you all know, we did have a meeting this morning, at the leadership meeting that we had this morning, that was the session, um, the two, uh, legislations that, um, have been presented, um, you know, that was the topic of discussion as whether they will be proceeding forward or not. Um, so just keep your Wednesday open, um, in the event that we do have Navakia on Wednesday. So with that, committee members, are there any other announcements that need to be made at this time?
Madam Chair, Eugene So.
Honorable Eugene So, go ahead.
The other shit, she hadn't come in, so I knew that nothing can affect you, but you go down, there's strong lady. Uh, she, I thought I'm not doing this, but I'm a great Indian, I know you can go through it, so it's a baby. It's a head, listen to hear you can. If you had the, um, uh, a sah, sah, or shop, it's that also. Starting January though, I wanna try to get that police academy in my area back on the, on the floor. The, he names kid, I have not, my source about and one on that, um, wanna put that on the, on the floor sometime before next year is over, get some money on it. It is, yeah, um, I'm crazy, I just want to, I was a, so, so, I want that one on that, thank you.
Aya Shajah for those words and then also, um, Aya, thank you for, for your prayers too, Shajah. So, Angie, can you go ahead and, uh, when you email Lorraine, also remind her that, or maybe not remind her, but let her know that Honorable Eugene So is requesting a, um, report on the Police Academy and then, you know, step on moving forward and how the committee can, uh, with the Police Academy, so we can add that, uh, on the, um, next, uh, agenda as well. So with that, committee members, I don't think there's any other announcement. Yes, Honorable Otto So?
One area that we need to look at is the evaluation of the Chief Justice and the evaluation of the Associate Justice and the evaluation of the, uh, of, uh, the court, uh, the, the district court judge that we have, um, that we have, um, confirmed to probationary appointment, um, Miss Naomi, Naomi Gilmore. And, uh, we need to get, start up those processes for their, um, public hearings. Uh, I think the pandemic is not a, uh, uh, something that we should, um, hide behind or anything, but we should move forwards with the, with the, um, public hearing relating to the, to the, to the, um, to the confirmation of the permanent seat. Because right now, I believe the Chief Justice's term may be expired. The probationary, what happened? Does her three seventy-one powers go away and does it go to the, uh, to, to, you know, to the Associate Justice, who is appointed permanent? So we need to, um, address those issues, uh, related to our judges because, to, to, to our judicial branch, because it is one of the, um, cornerstones of the Navajo Nation government. They provide those services to the Navajo people and I just don't want any attorneys, um, saying that our, uh, any decision that has been made has been, um, you know, that there may be, um, issues with them because their term has expired. So we need to start looking at that and, uh, maybe we could get an update from the judicial branch on the next meeting too, also, related to the, um, to the, um, um, to the evaluation. And we need to start here, start scheduling the, uh, hearings. And I believe the hearings, we can have it through, um, teleconference. So in that way, we can, uh, continue to conduct the, uh, normalcy of businesses of our judicial branch, because it is an important arm of the Navajo Nation. Eh, day, yeah, I have these, yeah, thank you.
Aya, I should say, thank you for reminding us of that. I believe we did ask that question at one time and Judicial was supposed to get back to us. Normally, I know Karen Francis is listening in to these committee meetings. Um, is there anybody on Judicial who's, who's on this call right now, is there anybody on? Okay, um, Mr. Cook, can you assist the committee, Mr. Cook, are you there?
I'm still here, ma'am.
Perfect, Mr. Cook, can you assist the committee and drop a letter to Judicial asking, um, how and when they're gonna proceed forward with the confirmation hearing for the, uh, for the, uh, the pre-port, um, or Madam, Madam, uh, Chief Justice? Um, I believe we did ask that question, I wanna say maybe it was two months ago and they were supposed to get back to us, but they, they haven't still, so if you could, if we could draft an official letter on behalf of the Law and Order Committee, um, reminding them that we do need to proceed forward with that confirmation. Um, and then if we could also look into, Mr. Cook, um, item number two is if you could also look into what the law states about, um, the current, I guess, status of the Chief Justice and she hasn't, um, has, she has not been confirmed, um, and I think it's gonna be one year, uh, here in February when, um, her, her, her probationary period had ended, so it's actually a one-year overdue. So if you could assist us with that as well.
Madam Chair?
Honorable Otto So?
Can you include in the evaluations? Because if there's no evaluation, we can't proceed, uh, hearings, especially on the Chief Justice. We really need to get information related to the evaluation, thank you.
Mr. Cook, you better get that.
I copy on that, ma'am, thank you very much.
Uh, Madam Chair.
Oh, oh, Karen, hello, thank you for getting on the line. Uh, really quickly, we are going to be sending a, a letter to the judicial branch asking how the judicial branch is going to move forward with the confirmation, um, of the Chief Justice. Um, and so I, I, I had called to see if you were on the line to ask, I believe we had asked about two months ago, um, you know, what was gonna happen, um, and I believe, I think, and I, and I have to go back into my email, I, I, I thought I remembered, um, something, an email saying that you guys would, um, be providing us an update and then also how, how, um, this was gonna proceed forward, but we haven't received any information yet. So, uh, it's just an FYI that we'll be sending you all a letter.
Okay, thank you, um, Madam Chair, we'll be looking out for that letter and, um, I, I will let, um, our, um, office over here know as well, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Francis.
Sorry, uh, Madam Chair, Newton, did you want me to go ahead and disregard your request then at this point on that letter?
No, go ahead and proceed forward with the letter. That way it's official that the committee is asking, um, 'cause I think that the first time that we had asked it was a verbal, uh, followed up with a, an email, uh, but if we have this letter written on behalf of the committee, then it becomes an official, um, committee action.
Okay, uh, and if you don't mind, maybe, um, either yourself or one of the designees could come in and, uh, do the OLC request, so that way I can keep it for my records as well.
I will be in today and I will go ahead and drop that request.
Very much appreciated, Madam Chair.
Thank you, so with that, committee members, if there's no other announcements?
Madam Chair.
Hope?
Hi, one more, um, item and that is the, um, Division of Public Safety, I believe, is requesting, um, a member of the Law and Order Committee to, um, speak or to speak at the Police Academy graduation on January second. Has the committee designated that individual?
Let me do it, Eugene So.
Well, there you go, we have somebody who is gonna volunteer, Honorable Eugene So can go ahead and, uh, can do the speech, if, if the other committee members are in agreement with that. I don't hear any objections to that, so Honorable Eugene So will be the, uh, the speaker there at the graduation.
Okay, Madam Chair, I will let our office know, thank you.
And I think for those of us who can attend, we will, um, we will be there. I would, uh, I would like to attend, uh, but of course, you know, um, we will have to see what their, what their, uh, guidelines are for attendance. Okay, so with that, committee members, I don't believe there's any other announcements, so we're gonna go ahead and, um, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
Delegate James.
Delegate Vince James motions, can I get a second?
Delegate Eugene So.
Second by Honorable Eugene So, so with that, we're gonna go ahead and proceed forward to the vote. Sherelle, can you assist us with the roll call vote, please?
Okay, Honorable Vince James, how do you vote?
Delegate Jane votes green, thank you.
Honorable Vince James votes green, Honorable Eugene So, how do you vote?
Vote, yeah, thank you.
Honorable Eugene So votes green, Honorable Otto So, how do you vote?
I vote green.
Honorable Otto So votes green, Honorable Edmund Yazi, how do you vote? Honorable Edmund Yazi, how do you vote? Chair, you have three in favor, zero opposed, two not voting, which is including the chair not voting.
Okay, with that, committee members, we are adjourned, it is now one forty-four. You guys be safe out there and our next meeting is, um, I'll send out an email regarding our next meeting. You guys be safe out there, we're adjourned. And Merry Christmas, everyone.
A show, you should, nice, you came back, I should, a show.
Merry Christmas from the, uh, Office of Legislative Council as well.
Oh, yes, oh, Merry Kashkhan, Merry Kashkhan, guys, you guys be safe and put your, make sure you practice your, uh, social distancing and, uh, so forth, wear your mask.
A born at Merry Christmas all.